Good evening. Tonight is Thursday, July 24th. May I have a motion to return to public session? Motion by Bill, can I have a second? Second by Carolyn, all those in favor? Six zero. I hope everybody's enjoying their summer so far. Before we start our meeting, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item that we're going to address tonight is Board Committee reports. There are no reports for tonight, but we are working tonight on forming our committees for the upcoming school year. I appreciate everybody submitting the committees that they were interested in being a part of for the year. And I've taken all of that consideration, Barbara and I looked at it. And so the following committees that we are proposing is Policy. Marjorie, if you would chair that policy with Barbara and myself. Audit, I know John's not here, but I will ask him to chair Audit Committee with Arwin and Carolyn. LES, I will continue chairing that committee with Barbara and Carolyn. Sustainability, Barbara, if you wouldn't mind chairing that committee with Carolyn and Bill. Facilities, Marjorie, if you wouldn't mind continuing to chair that committee with Bill and John. Finance, Bill, if you would continue to chair that with Barbara and myself. Parent Council, Arwin, we would love for you to join the Parent Council Liaison Committee. Marjorie, you've continued to serve, please as our amazing delegate to NISBA and W... Is there an acronym for that?
WestPOT.
Thank you. Brain isn't quite working tonight, I'm on summer vacation a little bit. We have a new committee or a new District Committee that we're going to have a Board Liaison for Special Education, I will serve on that. Marjorie, if you'll continue to serve on our Safety Committee. Food Services, Carolyn, if you wouldn't mind serving on that. And then John had requested to continue serving ERJC. Any questions, concerns, problems with those committees? And our dedicated Kim will be sending out for those committees that we have public members on, she'll be sending out letters to the community to request that they submit letters of interest on serving in those committees, with the exception of Lewis Barrow. I think we're two years into that committee and I think there's a desire to keep that committee as is. So those letters will be going out to the community shortly and we really are lucky in that we get a lot of support from our community and interest. In some years it's very difficult to, you know, keep the committees a manageable size because so many people are interested. So it's a very good thing to become involved in our school committees, so we appreciate that work. That brings us to 7.01, are there any board announcements tonight? So we will move on to 8.01, discussion of the tax levy. Lisa, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And I'm here tonight to present on the tax levy and I'm pleased to report that the district ended the fiscal year in a positive financial position. As a result, the total tax levy will remain exactly as presented during budget discussions. The only difference are minor changes in tax rates, which are due to variations in assessed property values across the towns. The largest variation is an increase of 25 cents, so it's not significant, per $1,000 of assessed value, so it's insignificant. But as a reminder, the tax levy is directly linked to our fund equity, which consists of three components. We have our restricted reserves, which are funds that are limited by the law or regulations for specific purposes. We have assigned or non-spendable funds, which are designated for specific future uses. And then we have our unassigned fund balance, which is also referred to, that's usually what is referred to, as the fund balance, that's the 4%, that is the amount that we can reserve that is not designated, it's an undesignated fund balance, so it's not designated for specific purposes. The fund, our unaudited total fund equity increased by approximately $1.5 million over the fiscal year. The major reason for that is a $930,000 roughly increase in interest earnings, and that was on our 2024 ban, and that is in a restricted reserve that is specifically in our debt reserve. And that money does need to go down to be used to spend down or pay down the debt. So that's the biggest piece of that increase there, so when you see that big increase, as well as $180,000 in premium when we closed on the 2025 ban. And again, next June, when we pay down or we pay off the ban, we will use $180,000 to pay down the ban. By law, these funds must be reserved, I already said that, and used to pay down debt. And we will strategically, that specifically, that $930,000, we will strategically spread that over the 18 years of the debt and look at our long-range planning, any years where we may need additional revenues or something, and try to spread that out because also we do have the additional $25 million of, it was actually about $35 million of ban because we bonded part of the money because we already closed those projects. But so right now, we have additional revenue that we have again in a bank account, a restricted bank account, money market, and any of that interest that we earn will use to pay down debt in the future, so, which is helpful, it's always helpful to have a little extra revenue for the district. And on June 26th, we projected necessary reserve adjustments to ensure that we are fiscally responsible planning for future years. The most notable change, as I already had mentioned, or the most notable change was the debt reserve and the second was the capital reserve, and we're allowed to increase that reserve by 200,000 plus interest, which we did maximize that because there are specific items that we know do need to be addressed in the district. So we will be, we do want to continue to fund that reserve. As well as you'll see, our reserve for encumbrances decreased significantly and is now approximately $100,000 lower than last year. This decline is largely due to basically the ongoing, this school year, we put a cutoff earlier on spending, so that allows us to close things down quicker or sooner and not have to roll over or carry over those encumbrances to the subsequent year because we haven't received invoices. So that's why there's less money that we're encumbering and carrying into the future year. The tax levy, during the budget process, we proposed to offset the tax levy using two sources, 1.1 million from those various reserves, the debt, the EBLAR, which is Employee Benefit Accrude Liability Reserve, our TRS reserve, as well as our ERS reserve, those are both reserves for retirements, and as well as, let me see, do I have it written down here? An unemployment reserve. So we took specific monies, a total of $1.1 million from those reserves, and we're appropriating them to offset the '25-'26 budget, as well as 200 and 2, excuse me, 2.45 million of designated funds consistent with last year, and those are undesignated funds, and that is money that was available in the '24-'25 budget that we used to offset. Basically, it's money that we're not needing in '24-'25, so it's used to offset the tax levy, so. Our unassigned, undesignated fund balance stands at 3.99, right just below the 4% maximum allowed by the state. And please note that these are not finalized, our audit is the first week of August, where those numbers will be finalized, we'll receive, and O'Connor-Davies will come here in October and present to the Board and the public on our financials. So all of this brings us to the resolution tonight before the Board, which is the formal approval of the tax levy. In May, the voters approved the expenditure portion of the budget. Tonight, the Board is being asked to approve the primary revenue source, which is the tax levy, again, which is unchanged from that, which was projected during budget development. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you so much, this is all great news and very excited to vote on the resolution. I just had a future-focused question because it's been a while since we've borrowed, to the extent that we're borrowing now. So the interest earnings that you mentioned, that we can use to offset or to pay down our debt, should we anticipate that we'll continue to see, I mean, market-dependent, market forces depending, but that we could potentially be seeing for the next however many years, interest earnings that similarly will help us or could be used to pay down the debt? Or is this a one-time situation?
We will continue to earn money for this school year as dependent upon the progress of the pre-capital projects, so I would say probably through this school year, and then we are hopeful that by the end of 2026, everything will be closed down. So we will not have those funds in the bank because we'll have to spend them.
Okay, that makes sense.
But this school year will continue, and hopefully, interest rates, they aren't quite as high as they were when last June, but we will, are continuing to earn that money in the bank because we have it in a restricted fund. And we're also talking to capital market advisors, and they have some other funds that we could potentially, we're very restricted in where we can invest our monies, it has to be very secured investments, but we're speaking to capital market advisors about other areas where we can, but we just have to plan it and time it based on the projects and when we need the money to be liquid, so that's what we're working.
Lisa, I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you do on this, and also to our town clerks for working with you on the levy number. So there's a lot that goes into this, you always make it sound so easy, but we appreciate everything that you do to support the district.
Thank you, Lorraine.
So at this point, we get to move on to exciting 8.02. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution? Motion by Marjorie, second, second by Barbara, all those in favor? Six zero. Thank you very much. Next, we're moving on to 9.01, public comment, as there is nobody here tonight to speak at public comment, we will close that at this point. We do, however, I would like to just mention that we do love when the public comes to speak to us on a variety of different topics, so if you are sitting at home watching this, please come and speak to us about what your concerns are and anything that's good is happening too, because that's always exciting to hear, good comments, so thank you. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda, we need to pull 13.7 from the consent agenda. Is there any other things that need to be pulled? Isn't it, what did I say?
13.07.
Sorry, 13.17. I had written 13.17, I guess maybe if I was wearing my glasses.
And do we want to maybe explain why we're pulling it? I think we have to.
So 13.17 is the resolution on the coaches, so we do have a board member that has a family member that's going to be a coach, so we are pulling that from the consent agenda to be voted on separately. Can I make a motion, can I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
Minus 13.17?
Minus 13.17.
You got it.
Motion by Barbara, Marjorie, I think seconded by Barbara. And I think we want some discussion on, I think we start with 11.04 and 11.05, please, Marjorie.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, Lorraine. I just wanted to pause briefly over 11.04 and 11.05 because we have a couple of policies tonight on the agenda for both first read and proposed adoption. And I know the Board is already aware that the Policy Committee had been meeting and had met previously on May 30th to really dig into the new required policy for a distraction-free school environment, and Policy Committee had opportunity to reconvene on Monday, July 14th. And what you see before you tonight is our best effort to provide our school district with a distraction-free school policy that would create a learning environment where students are engaged and where we are complying with the new law that went into effect as a result of this past budget cycle. I wanted to just mention a couple of things that have taken place in between May 30th and tonight's opportunity to adopt, including the opportunity for stakeholder engagement, which took place to a large extent last spring. I had the opportunity to sit in on a couple of PTO meetings where Chris Nelson, our Director of Technology at the time, facilitated conversations with parents and administration, and also a little bit of discussion around the anxious generation, which the middle school was engaged in reading at the time, to really talk about what this might mean for our students at the secondary level. And then at the elementary level, there had been outreach to building-level principals and assistant principals and staff. And in our deliberations as a Policy Committee, we really did spend what I think was very thoughtful time trying to develop guidelines that would be feasible for all families. So that's really what you have in front of you tonight, I wanted to pause over both that policy and 11.05 because in a similar vein to school districts being required to adopt the distraction-free school policy by August 1st, we're required to adopt a policy to ensure the health and safety of students, faculty, and staff under conditions that are being described as extreme heat conditions, and especially because we're asking the Board to review in first-read mode and adopt. Tonight, we wanted to just create opportunity for any questions or clarifying comments. The extreme heat policy was discussed at some length in the onboard publication that we received in the June 30th edition and did a really good job of outlining what Boards of Education are responsible for at this juncture, and then what the administration is responsible for with regard to implementation. So I thought, you know, at the very least, we might want to just spend a minute trying to envision like, what's this really going to look like? And I wanted to take the opportunity to also thank Lisa Hurley and Mike Lavoy and our Department of Operations and Maintenance for being very proactive in helping our school district to meet this otherwise somewhat unfunded mandate, and I will let you talk in as much detail as you want to about some of the very exciting work that's been happening over the summer, but really thank you for your proactive thoughtfulness and your fiscal responsibility in helping us to come up with some amazing solutions that are both going to enhance comfortability in our schools and classrooms and also ensure that we're doing so at the lowest possible decibel level. And I'll let you say the rest. So I just wanted to invite that brief conversation on those two policies, questions and comments.
Yeah, so actually, Dr. Blanch had us, he called a small committee of Mike, myself and him, to quickly, to quickly come to a plan of action, because we were given just a very short period of time from the time that this passed with the budget to implementation that has to happen September 1. And Mike Lavoy, our Director of Facilities, quickly began meeting with the principals to identify the hottest spots of the buildings and to try to strategize, like how can we get those spots, prioritize them, we want all of our spots to be comfortable, all of our classroom spaces, but specifically to prioritize those. Mike, also Lavoy did research to find systems that were at low decibels, because our objective here for both the temperature of the classroom as well as the decibels is to minimize any interruption to instruction, like to have a comfortable learning environment as well as not be a noisy environment. So he did find systems. We could not put the split systems into the building because it would literally triple the costs and we are, you know, it probably costs about $300,000 and it would be an upward of $900,000 to like over a million dollars if we had put the split systems in. Mike is installing and the team and the custodial, all of our custodians, though I should also mention them, you know, on top of all the cleaning and the bond work, now they're also installing window systems, and since we don't have our typical windows in our buildings, they are customizing, you know, they're customizing where they're putting specific wallboards into the windows themselves, which are metal reinforced, and then building in those air-conditioning systems. So that is what we are doing. We do have some air conditioning in our wing spaces in Increase Miller, Metal Pond, as well as in those gymnasiums, and then next year, KES will be air-conditioned. So this is, what we will do is then we will take those systems out and then reuse them as backup systems for our buildings, as well as we will continue to monitor, we have a building management system, which actually the custodians use to monitor the temperatures in all the buildings, so in all of the classrooms. So each classroom is online, and the custodians do have, the head custodian monitors the temperatures using that, and then the appropriate steps will be taken by building administration to, if, with, any of those temperatures are exceeded.
Thank you. And we did have an opportunity at the end of the last policy meeting to actually tour Q, historically one of the hottest areas in the high school, and it was comfortable, it was quiet, and I think the children or the students are going to be very excited, and the parents especially, for back-to-school night because that gets really warm by the time we're sitting in those classrooms between 7:00 and 9:00 at night. You've been there in those rooms, and so it's very exciting, and it was great to see it in action, and we got to witness our great team putting them in, and they're excited about it, which is wonderful.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions for Lisa about?
She answered all my questions in my head.
I don't have questions regarding the extreme heat policy, mine are more pertaining to the personal electronic devices. I've had a lot of people actually reach out to me, basically to say, this is kind of when you were already in the middle school and high school, what the policy was for our school district, but it's not being enforced. I know kids who text all day long, so how are we going to monitor and enforce this is really going to be the question.
Yeah, so from the perspective as far as monitoring, forcing, we're not going to be checking students for their phones and things like that, it's if that phone, that device is seen, then now there's law that would say, look, you need to be able to, you're able to ask for that, and so we'd be bringing those devices in, the buildings are looking at right now of what the code of, or the student handbook will say, so for example, on first offense, it may be, okay, you get it at the end of the day, the second offense, maybe your parents have to come in and get that device and things, so those are the pieces that'll be walking through the summer as the buildings look at updating that code of conduct. And the expectation is, and the clarity is, that they're expected to be, for example, us in the high school, to be maintained and left in those lockers and powered off, and so we won't be looking at lockers and seeing if they're in there or not, but it'll be when they do come presence, it's like, okay, there's your warning, next one, you need to grab it, next time, want to grab it, maybe your parents need to come and pick that up.
So again, a lot of the kids do not use lockers, we know that.
It will.
Do we have enough lockers for all the kids? We do. We're going to probably have to repurpose a few in the high school here, middle school, yes, and at the elementary, it's basically backpack and then in your cubby.
Right, but I was told that we didn't have enough lockers, so that was my next question, but.
Who told you that?
Students who have been in the school.
We've lost a few students over these last few years, and we'll probably repurpose some of the lockers that we do not use really any longer in our, both our men's and women's locker rooms. So we've got lots of unused lockers in those spaces, so we have that at the worst to get us started, if we need to, along later, we can do that, but we have enough to at least get us starting in that regard, we can use those lockers to round it out.
And I think I saw that we got a very small state appropriation to you.
They're very small, very small, but if we have to buy a few lockers, you know, there's a very small appropriation from the state for us to be able to implement that.
Can I ask, when do you expect that parents will have a, when do we expect a communication to parents regarding changes to the handbook? And, oh, you don't want to worry.
Our new Assessment and Research Technology Director, Jessica, she started designing that, and just swinging around, just got one copy, says draft, but in essence, when parents are tuning back in to the start of the school year, will those packets go home and all the updated information, those will be pieces that will go out there. I met last week with our PTO presence at the elementary level, had a lovely conversation about the policy. Again, it was not anything other than very supportive and felt like it would be generally supportive, so that was very good. And so it's just as much of, does that mean watches? Yeah, it means the watches too. And so, and does it mean the air tags on your bags, not supposed to be coming with those and things as well too, so it's going to take a little time to get used to that. And that's where, again, the reality is, especially at the elementary level, students at times do bring in things that they really shouldn't be bringing into school, so our teachers are pretty well adept at having that conversation. If you need to go to a little different speech, just like anything else, we have, you know, our support staff in those buildings to help, be it, you know, other wellness professionals or the administration. Middle school, high school, same thing, lockers, expect to be kept away and doing that in that regard. There's no way we could possibly place 900 telephones on kids and things like that, so.
Totally not.
Yeah, so it just gives a general sense of, here's the expectations and here's where we're going.
And there'll be time for parents to file their request for an exception to the rule. Should there be a medical reason?
Yep, and so those are the pieces, and then with that and the policy the Board's approving this evening, as we, if that is the case, then there has to be medical documentation that goes along with those, so that will generally take a little time if that is the case.
Right, that was my question, I want time to.
Yes.
That file.
So I am actually a very big believer that, I tried to hold out the longest with my kids in giving them a phone, so I may not even be like appreciated for my next comment, but the policy of taking it and giving it at the end of the day, and the policy, and then the next offense, the parent has to come in, that was already in place. A lot of kids didn't see that as being a deterrent from it. Do we think there is room to say, the first offense, your parent has to come and get this?
So I, again, I wouldn't be surprised if that's a building-level decision, if that is where the team determines, they're processing that now with just Jessica coming on board, she had a meeting last week with one of the secondary schools, she's having another one next week, so that team will kind of drive exactly where that is. And what you described there, or one again, is we need the support of our parents, so our parents need to help us out on this and say, okay, if the kid has to bring it because they have something after school, so be it, please turn it off, please put it in your locker, please put it in your bag. We get that kind of level of support and everything, I think we'll be in a much, much better place. Now, if you remember, at the end of last year, Stephen spoke here, he talked, debriefed a little bit about our senior conversations, and some of the Board members talked about that, and one of those questions was, what would the kids say, and to a T, all the kids said, I think we would have been better off by not having those devices in the school. And so the reality is, is our kids are telling us, who have been living in the schools, a significant majority of our parents, it's like, let's work on this together. And so if what you're describing, I wouldn't be surprised, say, okay, it's in, you don't get it back until somebody comes and picks it up from you.
I think you'll get more parents.
Especially with some of the, especially some of the older ones, the little ones, little different piece and stuff like that, we'll see, but it's again, the watches and stuff that are starting to kind of creep in, and when I speak there, the reality is, is that when we have parents knowing the children in school, knowing the children in class, and texting them, and trying to call them during the school day, that's when it becomes a problem. So it's not just like into the kids, it's like from the home into the schools, reaching out to the kids when they're during the school day, so that would help if that stopped too.
And I think we had a lot of good discussion at our policy meeting about giving some autonomy to the teachers in the classroom about the use of technology, because there will be circumstances, technology is a part of our society now, and there will be occasions that the educational efforts require the use of devices. So, you know, it's hard to kind of create a one-size-fits-all policy, and we really are going to be relying on those building-level administrators and the teachers to work at those kinks, and we always have an option throughout the school year to come back to revisit any policy and make changes as necessary, but we were required by the state in a very short period of time to turn around a new policy. So we did the best with what we had and tried to come to some good compromises, but, you know, I don't think that this is a one-and-done conversation for the school year, and if need be, we can come back and revisit it anytime.
I wholeheartedly suggest everybody read Anxious Generation by John Kennedy, it was eye-opening for me.
And I think, and with that energy, that just continues to evolve as we get a little bit further away. If his studies, he continues to keep on top of that, it's pretty irrefutable of what needs to take place. And to be honest with you, when our really supported PTO in the fall held, you know, the event at the Bedford Playhouse, there's like, the reality was that there was a large, significant population, over 150 people, I think, were there from K through 12 that were right there with us, and so I think for the significant majority, we're going to be right in line, and then it's going to be a change, and for some people, change can be a little bit more difficult, but hopefully be as clear as we possibly can in support of that same regard as well too, so, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
And then I also thought, before we vote on the consent agenda, that maybe we just want to briefly touch on 14.01 and 14.02 through the lens of facilities updates, maybe, if we could ask Lisa to say.
So 14.01, you will see that there is, 14.01 is our transfer. The first two are, the second transfer is really just cleaning up all of our budget lines, you know, where people are budgeted, staff are budgeted. lines, you know, where people are budgeted, staff, staff are budgeted in one place and they get transferred during the year. So that is primarily what that is. The second, or rather, the third document linked in that agenda item, you will see that there are some large, there's one large transfer into one line specifically, and what we are doing there is we're transferring available funds, which was intentionally, we intentionally worked to have these funds available at the year end in order to move it to our building improvement line. And specifically, we needed to move these expenses because we're moving expenses out of the capital fund, thereby preserving funds and capital to do critical upcoming needs for the district, specifically the diesel and tank replacement, which has been cited by the county and needs that needs to be done, and that is approximately a half million dollar project. And as well as other unanticipated and incidental costs that are associated with our ongoing bond projects, which you actually, in the next 1402, you will see major credit change orders there. Again, where where we have seen cost escalations that have exceeded that, which were budgeted. So we did, in order to be able to do the geothermal project, we did have to go through and do some major change orders and reductions of the scope of the work for that project in order to be able to fulfill the, to do the geothermal project. So that's what that is. And and again, also because of these escalating costs and moving around the money from capital fund to general fund, that also we will have a little extra percentage of the budget for incidental costs as we move forward, as, you know, we still have another good year plus on all of the bond projects. So and we're just entering summer when, I guess we're.
Almost halfway through.
A little bit in summer, but, but yes, I'm almost halfway through summer, but that's when the vast majority of our work gets accomplished in, in school districts, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
No, but I did also want to just briefly come back to 12.03 and just recognize and say thanks to Dr. Drake for putting together a really thoughtful, professional learning plan, which is so important in the way that we support our teachers and their continuous development and to make it align with our Vision 2030. It's just another component that sort of brings everything together to execute on on the vision that we've we've outlined for the district. So I just wanted to recognize that and thank her and the curriculum committee for for all the effort that went into this document.
Any other discussion for the consent agenda? So we have a motion pending with the exception of 13.17. All those in favor? Six zero. Now can I have a motion for, to move 13.17? Motion by Marjorie, second by Arwin. All those in, abstention by Bill. All those in favor? Five zero, one abstention. Next, we get to move on to probably my favorite agenda item, that's 15.01, the resolution regarding donations and gifts. We are fortunate to be receiving a gift from the Cornell College of Agriculture and Life Sciences in the amount of $860 for the John Jay Middle School garden beds. It just is very rewarding that, you know, we continue to see such generosity towards our schools. So I'll make a motion to accept the gift. Can I have a second? Again, by Arwin. All those in favor?
Just briefly, thank you to our staff member for applying for a grant.
Oh, yes.
It was like it was a grant, so that's phenomenal.
Yes.
Yes, in favor.
Six zero. Sorry, I read that and then it wasn't here, so thank you for bringing that.
Absolutely.
That brings us to 16.01 for dialogue and discussion. Anybody have any other topics? So we will move on to future meetings. We will next be meeting here in the John Jay High School Library on Thursday, August 28, and I will remind our community that we have moved our board meetings to start at 7:00 PM. And then we'll be, we will be meeting on September 4, also here in the library at 7:00 PM for a Board of Education meeting. And then 18.01, right?
I think we've hit it too late.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Arwin, second by Bill. All those in favor? Six zero. Thank you, and I hope everybody enjoys this last month of summer before we're back. Thank you.